And rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. In our report out from closed session, at the September 11th Board Meeting during the closed session, the Board voted in favor of a two-year rolling contract for Vice Presidents and Controller with 12-month severance pay or until securing a job, whichever occurs sooner. During tonight's closed-session discussion, actually this afternoon, by a vote of six to zero, the trustees rescinded the contract revision for Vice Presidents and Controller, reverting language back to their original contract, which was a two-year fixed contract, 18 months maximum severance. It was motion by Margie, seconded by Abe, and the vote was six to zero. So that's our report out of closed session. So next up, we have approval of the minutes of the October 2nd Board of Trustees Meeting, and we got additional changes.
If there's no additions. If there's no additions or corrections, I'll move that we accept the minutes as submitted.
Nothing beyond the origi—right.
I'm sorry, October 2nd.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Abe and Nancy, any abstentions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next, we have approval of the minutes of the October 9th Special Meeting.
If there were no additions or corrections, I'll move the except the minutes of October 9th as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Nancy, any abstentions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're up to 3.5. Do we have any public comments? Anytime, though. Okay, we are up to 4.1, the Board Finance Committee Report, which Abe will give us.
On November 9th of this year, the committee received information focused on the monthly finance update, FTE's update, and quarterly report on the district's financial condition. The next meeting will take place December 2nd at 11:00 a.m. here at the District Office. That's the end of the report.
Thank you, Abe. Next up, we have the Board Policy Committee Report, and we are going to go out of order two and move 7.2 and 7.5 to this section also.
Our committee met yesterday, and we went over the third reading, second readings, and first readings. We found one that was due for the second reading that we actually had to pull. I think the recommendation to the Board is that we pull it, and we can explain that when we get to it. But I do want to mention, we were very delighted to have Savannah, our student trustee, join us for her first Board Policy and Procedure Committee meeting, so thank you for coming to that.
Thank you.
Any other—well, no, I need to mention that we also had a discussion on due process, and the committee voted to have a policy, sort of like our third or fourth time, the final, you know, writing, send it to the attorney. We want to bring our proposed policy to the full Board in January for their opinion, and if time to answer questions, and then if with Board approval, then we'd like to have this proposed policy go to the individual constituency groups for tweaking and adjusting and commenting on. So that's the end of my report, so we could invite Connie up now to go through the third readings and second and first.
Hello again. Okay. Good evening, Trustees, Chancellor Cabinet. So I'm looking at 7.2—nope, nope. Yeah, 7.2 was information, so that was approved last Board Meeting and a nonsubstantive change, just to close the loop and let you know that that document has been changed to reflect your vote last month. So I'll move on to 7.3, third reading, and that is 5570, Student Credit Card Solicitation. And we did have our student trustee at our Board Policy Meeting yesterday, and we did not hear any additional feedback, other than positive feedback about this affirmative statement, and so it was the recommendation of the Board Policy Committee to go ahead and approve this on the third reading. Would you like me to go on?
Well, I think we need to actually—yeah.
Okay. So—
Well, I move that the Board approve the third reading of the Board Policy on 5570, Student Credit Card Solicitation. I move that.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you. So we'll go on now to 7.4, second readings, and we did have—this was a really good example of how throughout the—however many steps in the process of reviewing Board policies and administrative procedures, we can have comments and feedback at any step along the way. And so we're kind of at our last step with this one, and I'm referring to 2432, District Chief Executive Officer Succession. So we had some comment come in yesterday morning, and we were able to discuss it at our Board Policy Committee Meeting, and we did make some changes with that discussion. So you will see that at the dais at your area. And the changes are on line 16. What we did was take out all of the specific titles, and now the sentence will read, "The succession order is at the discretion of the Chancellor and may be selected from the Vice Chancellor's or college president's," rather than listing out each of the titles. So that allows for—
Flexibility.
So that is the one recommended change on that one in your second reading. Any discussion there? I will go on then to the rest of that slate. And 3300, Public Records reviewed that. We had no additional recommendations come out of the Board Policy Committee. 4021, Program Discontinuance, same. 4230, same. 4-8065, same. No recommended revisions. And then that moves to 7250, Educational Administrators, and Trustee DiMartini, Chair of the Board Policy Committee, alluded to this in her report. Again, yesterday, we got additional feedback from faculty on this. Just having a question on some of the changes, and so we looked at it, we looked at ed code, we did our work there, and we decided that some more work needs to be done. So we have no recommended changes for you, but the Board Policy Committee asks that this be tabled until Human Resources and Academic Senate from both colleges can get together and discuss the changes. So that's the recommendation on 7250, is that it be tabled. Okay, and then the last one on that slate, 7500, Volunteers, and you'll see at your place, your seat, that we did have some recommended changes there from the Board Policy Committee. On line 26, the CCLC language was terminate, and we really liked the word that we had in there already, which was discontinued. We didn't feel like it was so harsh. So the sentence would read, starting in line 26, "A district may discontinue a volunteer's services at any time." Period. And that was the recommended change on changes in one table on that slate of second reading.
Connie, did you say line 27 on the second page?
Aye, for volunteers.
Am I wrong? Yeah, on volunteers.
Oh, excuse me, yes, thank goodness, they're in red. Okay, line 27, "He or she has been convicted of a crime," and we're correcting there, did say the Vice Chancellor of Human Resources, so we're leaving that a little bit more open in saying convicted of a crime and Human Resources determines, rather than the Vice Chancellor.
Some of these policies start when we had a Vice Chancellor of Human Resources, and they're ending up when we don't, and so this covers it, whoever's in Human Resources. And Connie has given the recommendations proposed by the Policy Committee and asked for the approval from the entire Board.
So we need a motion.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, we got one more.
She does.
One more is 7.5, your first reading. There's only three on that slate. The first one, 6100, Delegation of Authority, Business and Fiscal Affairs. The recommended change shows up in the administrative procedure, so while not up for a vote, definitely want to make sure that we cover this as a change. So that would be lines 12 and 13 of the administrative procedure. We talk about when transactions do not exceed the dollar limits established in the Public Contracts Code, and that is currently $50,000. So the recommendation was to add in that number. And that was the only recommended change on that, on those three documents.
So since these are first reading, are there any changes recommended by the Board members?
No. Okay.
We don't—then we don't need a motion. They're good to go.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, take care.
Wonderful evening. Okay, so we are now up to 5.1, a presentation from Modesto Junior College and Columbia College Food Pantries. With Melissa and—I have Amy. How do you pronounce your last name? Ira Baron, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I am Melissa Raby, the Vice President of Student Services at Columbia College, and with me, I brought my colleague, Lorraine Campana, who's the Coordinator of Health Services and College Nurse. So we're here, along with Modesto, to talk about food insecurities tonight. So I'm just going to read you this quote, "Paying for the full cost of attending college, including tuition, housing, food, and transportation, is the biggest barrier to success for most California students, particularly those from low-income families and communities of color." This was a quote that was in a report called the Student Expense and Resources Survey from the California Student Aid Commission. And what they also reported was that students are reporting that they are spending over about $2,000 per month on non-tuition-related expenses, and 35% of students reported having low or very low food insecurity. Black students reported the highest rate of food insecurity at 52%, followed by Latino students at 40%. This was from the survey. We're going to talk to you today about what we're doing on our campuses to address some of these food securities for our students. And so I'm going to pass the torch over here to Lorraine, who's going to tell you what we've been doing at Columbia.
Thanks, Melissa. Good evening. This particular issue falls under the non-academic barriers to student success, which are large and imposing and need to be addressed, and food insecurity is one of them. We had a relationship with San Jose State University's Master in Public Health Internship Program, and for three years, Columbia College had an intern working with us. And she did a survey of our students. Over 300 of our students were surveyed on food insecurity issues, and we found that while 65% of our students did know about our food bank, only 9% used it. And another—the reasons for not using the food bank were varied, and among them were stigma, not understanding how to use the food bank. And one of the things that came out of this survey that doesn't shown on this slide is that while students said—74% said they don't need the food, but when we queried them further, 40% said they went without a meal for a day, without food, without paying bills to buy food. So they do need the food. It's trying to make that connection between getting the food to them and the need. So these are some of the reasons they didn't use it. So what we're doing is addressing those needs and others that we know of that weren't necessarily outlined in the survey, but we have a ponderosa pantry, which is a de-stigmatizing word on purpose, that we didn't—we wanted to make it friendly, and that's run by our students, and it's in our student center. It's connected to a very well-established website that gives students lots of information. We have CalFresh. Representatives come to campus to sign students up for CalFresh. One of the things the students said that they wanted to learn more about was how to cook the food that came to the food bank, and so we have teaching recipe cards and information on how to cook food. And one of the unique and, I think, very favored interventions on campus are what we call these grab-and-go bowls. And in key places on campus, we have a big plastic bowl full of very particularly chosen healthy foods that students can just take, and they don't—no questions asked, they can just have something to eat. We're trying to de-stigmatize it with some campaigns, which we're working on, and then there's an online program to reach all of our students. We know our students are online, that's where they live, so we go there to be with them sometimes. And so there's a program called Wellness Central that has many modules on health, but one of them is on hunger and food insecurity, and we made a series of videos with the videographer, Skye, of our district, and we'd like to just show you a short, two-minute video that our students can see. So these are Columbia College students speaking to other students.
I mean, to feel hungry is just to constantly have a distraction, to be like, I'm doing this, but also I need to eat at some point, I need to think about when I could get home, I need to think about—it just adds additional things on your mind.
What does it feel like to be hungry? It feels like it's time to eat.
Being hungry for me is very distracting, and I can't concentrate on anything when I want food.
When I'm hungry, I feel myself less willing to really do anything. I feel like a lot of my work is rushed because of it.
I get a little hangry, it affects my mood and how I act to people, and I can't really focus on my work.
I can't get everything I want to complete done, and I can't focus quite right.
I did not know that I could get free food on campus.
I didn't know, actually. I usually pay for the food that we have here, so I didn't know that we had free food offered in campus.
Well, I definitely know that we do the free food on campus. I run the food bank over at the Student Center, so we give out free food to anyone who is a Tuolumne County president, but I do not know about the free food off of the campus.
Yes, I do know that you can get free food on campus at the food bank, and off-campus, you can get CalFresh services.
As the Adventist churches give, and there are other churches that give, the Catholic churches, they also have food ministries. I heard there's some other Protestant churches that have food ministries also.
So if you check your school for an on-campus food bank, usually they don't require any documentation, you can just go in and you say, "I'm hungry," and you can get food pretty much right away.
She's turning, changing. Now, I just do want to say, we really appreciate the administrative support that we get from the Student Services. Shout out to Melissa Raby and Mike Igo. So finally, for Columbia, I think we lost our screen, but I just wanted to summarize why we do this. Food insecurity is directly linked to negatively impacting student success. Students need food when they are hungry in order to perform at their best, and students cannot function to their fullest capacity when they are unsure how they are going to find their next meal. So at Modesto Junior College, we started our food distribution and food pantry efforts in the fall of 2017, and our goal really was to establish a strong foundation and to build from that. And another major goal that year was to start developing some strong community partnerships. We were wanting to distribute food as well as provide awareness, information, resources around CalFresh. So we started with a partnership with United Samaritans, and we were offering food just once a week, but about 100 boxes a month. We also worked with the church over near East Campus, excuse me, Emmanuel Lutheran. They started a pantry as well, and a hot breakfast one day a week for our students called Katie's Kitchen. We worked with Second Harvest Food Bank to offer CalFresh assistance with a representative from that organization, and a really wonderful addition was our employees at MJC started to donate toiletries, so we were able to offer some supplies as well to students, and they were very appreciative. Just like at Columbia College, the nurses started to develop recipes for the students, they were also expressing that they didn't really know what to do with some of the food that was being offered. A lot of them were really common staples, but again, they're learning, so we supported that with some recipes from the nurses. And then Health Plan of San Joaquin provided reusable bags. So here are some pictures from that year when we started. You can see those are the typical items on the left. We've got the toiletries from the employees. We had a lot of help from financial aid, and you can see bottom right are the two examples of the recipes that we developed for students. And then we're really proud of what we've done, starting in the fall. Just as Lorraine had mentioned from Columbia, we wanted to use de-stigmatizing language as well, so now we have a Pirate's Pantry. So we were starting with the one-day-a-week distribution, and now we have an actual location in Mary Stuart Rogers, and we have that open four days a week, so students can come and get a box of food or a bag of food. We also continued our work with United Samaritans to supply that food. We're up to 200 boxes with now frozen meat. And we also started a program with Second Harvest Food Bank, and we get Starbucks food delivered two days a week. It's extra food that they don't sell, and they give to us for free, and it's donated. So we feed quite a bit of students with that, and I'll show you pictures in a moment. And we continued our partnerships with Katie's Kitchen at the church, and then Center for Human Services is helping out. So this is our promotional material here. We have our poster and our sign, and then Jonathan Arias, who's here actually running the pantry over in Mary Stuart Rogers, that's our welcome table. So this is our pantry. It's stocked with a lot of great things. We have vegetables, fruits, you can see diamond, blue diamond almonds, cereal, so this is really helpful for students. They can get up to 40 items when they come in. And then this is our—we call it our pantry pop-up. This is a Starbucks giveaway. You can see the line kind of wrapping around to the right, but they bring a van and they unload a lot of food. It's pretty overwhelming and pretty great to see. Students can get a lot of items in that one visit, and I had a student recently say that she went to the church in the morning for breakfast, picked up Starbucks food, went to Flow, which we'll talk about in a moment, and was able to feed her family and herself for that whole day for free. So we have been, since August, served—we've served almost 1,200 students, and we've gotten a lot of great feedback from students, and I'll read some of these here. So, "The Pirate's Pantry has helped me a lot, because instead of worrying about paying for food on these days, I can use that money for school. The hard thing about college is that it also takes away the ability to work as much to help provide for my family, so it solves the food problem, because now I have—I always have something to eat at MJC." The next one's in Spanish, but it basically says that the first time I went to the food pantry, I didn't have enough money for food. I couldn't buy, you know, food for my family, so with the items that I received, I had enough to prepare three different recipes for myself and my family. And I feel that someone cares about me and that I am more than a student number, because MJC cares outside the classroom. So we're proud of our work and excited to share that with you all.
Good evening, all. It's my opportunity to talk about Flow. If you've had the opportunity to be on our campus either east or west on a Wednesday, it's very inspiring and also very emotionally overwhelming. It's inspiring at the work that Amy does and Jonathan does in our student body. Sometimes it's a little emotional, because it's amazing how many students are still suffering from food insecurities on our campuses. So when I say be on the campus on Wednesday, you saw the picture that Amy showed of the west campus, so this morning, for example, we had Flow along with one of our veterans' activities, and about 10:00, 10:30, we started services at 11:00, but about 10:00, 10:30, you'll see close to 100 students or more lined up, ready to eat. And they start their morning by grabbing their Flow, and then they make their circle over to the Starbucks line. You're going to get a little emotional about it, but it's just—it's a thing that we shouldn't have to deal with, but it's amazing to have these services to deal with. The irony of Flow is, we started Flow in 2015 because we were afraid to do a food pantry. And when I say afraid to do a food pantry, when it was brought to us by the students and student government and campus life, at the time, we had one full-time staff, we had a student government that really wasn't actively involved, so we were worried about sustainability and what can we do? So in trying to respond to the needs of our students, our staff got together, many of us had gone to local universities, and we talked about Welcome Week and things we had experienced where they gave food, and it was actually Megan Lee, who's a program specialist in our office, that came up with the name Free Lunch on Wednesdays. And so in the first semester, we started putting that together after visiting food pantries and doing everything. And it was a great venture starting out. So on March 19th, 2016, we launched. We made it as a Senator project, so our student government each year, they have to do a Senator project, so it was kind of all on the student the first semester. We served 3,000 students, but we learned that the way we were doing it was quite chaotic. So you can see in the bottom-right picture, we had shaping dishes and plates and napkins, and to get mine, it was almost about a two-hour process. And so we started looking at that, students with their schedule. We had one student that accidentally double-ordered the food one week, so we were over budget. So we've definitely learned along the way a few steps to kind of improve, and so that's what I'm going to share here. So Flow 2.0, so from 2016 to 2019, we changed up the food, and we looked for food that was more grab-ready, that we can produce quicker, that didn't require a lot of prep. And in that time, we served 33,000 students. So from 2016 to 2019, we served 36,000 students. Last year, at the end of the year, we were looking at the food, and we started examining it, and one of the problems we had is why it was easy to grab, by the time that we got food from a McDonald's, or by the time that we got food from a Pizza Hut and some of the other places, it was already cold. And so we looked at that and went back to the drawing board this summer, and met with some vendors and talked about how we did that. We also changed this year to where the campus life staff operates the Flow program, which goes on both east and west campus now, as part of raising the student activity fee last year, and then the students come and work the event, which is much more—takes the pressure off them, and it makes sure that we take care of all the things that we need to take care of and hand vendors and all that good stuff. Flow 3.0, which is this year, we now have all-new food. All of our food is designed to be in a way, like today, for example, they had Panera, so the very large burritos wrapped up nice and tight, nice and hot, Olive Garden soup and salad inside a container, nice and hot. So everything that we have this year as they line up is nice and hot and ready to go. And so where we're at this year now is we're up to 6,000 students for the year that we have served lunch, and now we're moving in kind of to the next phase of what we're doing with that. And the biggest part is that, one, this is funded through the students, so it's really important to know, it's a $100,000 expenditure. So while we say free lunch on Wednesday, somebody has to pay the bill, so it's not free. So when we increased the student activity fee last year, that was a big plus. We're still working to educate our faculty and staff on not—if we have some faculty and staff that encourage a student to waive the fee to save 10 bucks on the first day of school, and they don't realize that then they eliminate them from all the services that come. Every event that you hear about from student government is paid for by that fee. So if we're encouraging students to waive that fee, we're encouraging them to not be able to take advantage of the services that are on campus. We want to get out of the fee-waving business. And then last part is, as we move in towards the end of the school year, we will hit the 51,000 mark of students fed. So from fall 2015 to now, we will fit 51,000 students on campus. The cool part about what Amy was talking about and with Flow is, there is no stigma for us. There was in the beginning, now it's part of the events, it's part of the activities, it's part of the culture of Modesto Junior College, and you see that in the line. So there's no stigma that goes with it. So it is tough in the beginning, when you launch these programs, to push past that, but now it's an expected service of the campus, and it's just wonderful to see students be able to take advantage of that and then push forward to that. So we're very pleased about that, and with that, I think, if you have any questions for any of us, we'd be more than happy to answer those.
Brian, I just was confused. Does a student for the Flow lunch have to show student activity cards? Okay, thanks.
Yeah, so students show the student ID, come through, and then get the services. And then we get are able to go in and track that, and then make sure that it is a student that's giving the services.
Well, I am so impressed with both presentations and the—how do I categorize this? The empathetic and human part of educating. It's just so beautiful what you're doing. I have two questions. So Lorraine, do you get—do students pay—how do you do the—pay for all the food? So Lorene, do you get, do students pay, how do you do the, pay for all the food?
The Food Bank is a collaboration with our, with a federal food bank program, so we do not pay for any of that food. It comes from ATCA as a county agency.
Yeah, it's all donated. Right.
And I just want to say that our, our student government does provide lunches during the semester. They don't do it every week.
Right.
Obviously, scale of economy, we don't collect as much student activity fees, but they do that as well. We call it Warm-Up Wednesdays.
Yes, yes. You've given a presentation on that. It's so wonderful. And, and so is there any leftover food? No, okay, I just want to make sure that there's no waste.
Do you want a bag?
No.
We, in fact, last year, they teased me.
It's all, I mean...
We, so on the West Camp, the West Campus is a little bit different population, so on the West Campus for Flow, it takes about maybe 40 minutes to get rid of the food. This morning, we were out of Panera in about 20 minutes. If I may add to that, and Michaela Ramirez, your student body president, will be up in a second, she can speak to this, but they recently came back from a student leadership conference at the state. And Flow and the work that we're doing from both colleges was just unprecedented to their college, their student colleagues. So they got a lot of calls afterwards, like, "How do you do this?" And again, when we talked about, if you recall, you were gracious enough to approve the student fee increase last year. The difference between us and a lot of schools is that we give it all out, whoops, excuse me, we give everything out free. So after they went to their conference, they were finding out some schools will collect the fee and then charge a student for what they are kind of already paid for. And so they were very impressed the fact that we were able to take this and kind of run with that. And then with the food pantry that Amy and Jonathan put together, it's, it's almost unprecedented in the state, and it's very sustainable, which is nice.
Well, it's a tremendous effort and a ton of work, and it's so appreciated. So thank you, thank you very much.
Side remark, I was here a couple of, a couple of Wednesdays ago, and I thought the kids were in line to get a flu shot. You're right, there must have been 100 students lined up.
Yes, Jim.
My compliments to all of you. It's heartwarming, the effort you guys are doing to serve our students. And Amy and O'Brien, the numbers are staggering. Our students are faced with food insecurities and housing insecurities that we desperately need to address, and you're doing more than your part to address those because it's hard to study if you're hungry. And I think growing these programs are a necessity. And it makes me feel good that we have folks here that are providing what I consider an anchor institution, really providing, addressing poverty in our area. It's, it's real, and we can't turn our backs on it anymore. I know I told some of you that I went to the Salvation Army, and I see our students in the supply line, and we have students in their, in their shelters, and they're still attending school. So our students do want to succeed, and I think you're doing part, more than your part of removing, you know, those essential barriers that they're getting in the way. Their food, they're hungry, and a place to live. So thank you all.
Any other comments?
Thank you guys for your work.
Okay, we are up to the association reports, 5.3. Student Senate Activity Reports are listed first, Michaela and Franciska. Michaela's first.
Hi, good evening. I hope all of you guys are doing well.
Thank you.
We had our first Veteran Education Week this week. We started yesterday with a ceremony honoring all of the veterans, which was really nice. And then today, we had Flow along with a T-shirt giveaway for the students. And we had military vehicles on campus, on East Campus, along with some vendors and some resources. Tomorrow, we'll have a panel discussion in the fireside lounge, which I'm really excited about. We'll have a conversation with some veterans about how they adjust from military to civilization, how it is being a veteran, being a student, and just some different kind of resources in adjusting to, you know, coming back. We also will be having a health and happiness event next week. This is a two-part event. So the first part will be community agencies coming to campus with information for the students. And then the second part will be a workshop for students who want to know more about how to respond to mental health. And this will be a workshop facilitated, facilitated by health services staff. So I'm really looking forward to that. As of today, we have served 6,000 lunches every Wednesday for our students, just for the fall semester. And by the end of the fall semester, we will have served 7,500 lunches. ASMJC has been staying busy with events, volunteering, and writing resolutions. We have passed the resolution on the winter session. Any questions?
Yeah.
Okay. So whereas Yosemite Community College District and Modesto Junior College are fully committed to student success, and whereas Yosemite Community College District and Modesto Junior College are fully committed to student retention, and whereas Yosemite Community College District and Modesto Junior College are fully committed to acknowledging and removing barriers to student success, and recognizing that the desire of many students is to have a manner in which they can complete their coursework at MJC in a timely manner, and recognizing that some students believe that the current winter break is too long and not productive, and acknowledging that the creation of an optional winter session for students is an ideal way to meet the needs of our students, and mindful that this decision should be based on what is best for the students. Be it resolved that the associated students of Modesto Junior College fully unanimously and wholeheartedly support the implementation of a winter session for the Modesto Junior College students. Additionally, we respectfully ask that the Yosemite Community College District and Modesto Junior College understand, acknowledge, and fully support the consideration of having a winter session.
Thank you. Thank you. Can we have a copy of that?
Of course. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board.
Evening.
I have some reports on the events that we have had in the past month and upcoming events. At the end of October, we went to the California Community College Student Affairs Association. We took nine students, which is a lot for us, and we received valuable information to bring back to our Senate and apply to our work on campus for our students. Midsemester madness happened, and we gave our survey, asking several different questions to the students that attended, and they got a hot dog in exchange for answering a survey for us. And we are working on incorporating the results of this survey in order to better serve our students. And scarily, Christmas is coming around the corner, and so we have to prepare for that. We started preparation for our Christmas giving tree. A tree is going to be set up shortly in our Manzanita Building, and we encourage our staff and students who are able to do so to donate to that tree in taking a tag and buying what is on that tag for the children in the childcare center. Also, in relation to the childcare center, we are also preparing for our Christmas Children's Party on December 4th, and a budget has been set, and we will be working with our Child Development Center in order to throw a small party for the children that are in the daycare program, which is conveniently located right across from our student center. So we will also have cram night. It will be a busy week for us, that week before our finals. We have cram night on December 5th. A budget has been set, professors have been notified, and flowers have been designed, and we are in the, and are in the process of being hung up. And this is usually our largest event of each semester, and we are planning on receiving good attendance. And hopefully, by then, we will have implemented some of the things that we asked about in the survey, and we'll be giving out a second survey to see if the students feel that anything has changed. We are also currently revising the Associated Students of Columbia College's Constitution and Bylaws. We read, we read over the current Constitution and Bylaws and have found many errors and just things that are out of date, and are thus in the process of revising it. And this is also bringing many of our senators into the process and thus ensuring that the centers or senators are fully aware of their roles in our Senate, which is really good. Our water fountain and water bottle filling station that we funded is also, after a long wait, currently being installed in front of our student center, which is really exciting. I get to walk outside every day and see it being built, which is very, very exciting. So that should be done before the end of the semester, and that was money from our student activity fund. And so very, very exciting. Students walk by it all the time, and now they have access to water that will not be shut off in the winter, and will also be staying cool in the summer and is ADA accessible. So I'm very, very excited for that. A shed build kit to replace our food bank shed, which is quite old and dilapidated, has been bought and is in the process of being built, and we're still deciding whether or not we, after we build these, we will then tear them down and actually build a shed by hand, or keep the shed build kits, because it's very important. We have all the produce that we get from ATCA that kept in there, and especially in the summer, that produce goes bad very quickly, and it's a terrible waste of the food that we get. So we want to make sure that we have adequate facilities to house the food that we're trying to give to the students. So those are really important for us. We are winding down for the semester, but still have several projects and are excited to finish our semester strong. Any questions? Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you very much. We are up to our faculty rep to the board, Alan McKissit.
Thank you for this opportunity. I want to begin by repeating some remarks I made last time or paraphrasing them. President Hoopis was not here for your last meeting, so I'm going to repeat some remarks I made about President Hoopis, so he knows I'm perfectly willing to talk in front of his back. I again want to commend President Hoopis for his personal engagement with the constituencies at Modesto Junior College. I have observed the styles of numerous MJC presidents, and this one has the most sincere and inclusive open-door policy I have ever seen. Furthermore, he will walk through that door to come and talk to you where you are. The specific issue that brings this to mind is the proposed academic calendar on your agenda. I personally witnessed his extended conversations with the MJC Senate and the Senate Executive Committee about the issues we must consider to create the optimal academic calendar for student success. Then he sat and talked with me about it for a while. The conversations were stimulating and far-ranging. The consequences of these conversations is that the MJC Academic Senate is officially unanimously committed to joining all other constituencies in a task force that promises what is probably going to be the biggest effort yet, to gather data, analyze it, synthesize it, and then make recommendations to the college, the district, and the board. I think you're going to hear more details about that from President Chad Redwing. I also want to mention that I attended the Board Policy Committee meeting. Again, I wish to commend their work. Aside from the long-term efforts on the due process issue, the long, long-term efforts, the committee is very responsive to the concerns of any constituency members that attend their meetings, which are open and collegial. A lot gets done. And just as important, in my opinion, the committee is quite willing to hit the pause button when that is needed to gather more information or do more consulting. So that concludes my remarks, and thank you again.
Thank you very much. All right, we are up to Academic Senate with Chad Redwing.
I have sort of a suggestion, but I'm not sure that it's my right to make a suggestion. But when you look at the calendar, I'd be thrilled if, if with the, the student input and that, you take a look about what is best for students in the college during the summer, whether the 410 or 58 benefits, or if, if there isn't any difference or whatever.
Absolutely. Thank you, Trustee DiMartini, for that comment. The, the anticipated structure, I think, of the task force will facilitate that conversation. We hope to have co-chairs, co-chairs from each of the four constituency groups and have an equal number of students and faculty on the task force. I think the complexity will be to look at how course compression, right, which basically means offering a course in a short amount of time year-round, and calendar compression work together and in what ways that best serves students. So I think we're kind of looking to find a combination of those two solutions or tools for the problem to make sure that students have the, the most possible opportunities to garner the maximum number of credit units every semester.
Sounds great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good evening.
Is Pam here? Yes, she is.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Glad to see everyone again this month. So I want to start out with a heartfelt thank you and gratitude to all our veterans and their service to our beautiful country. So there's always a lot going on at each of the colleges, and so as I hear Chad, often the information that's being shared by one academic senate, the same types of activities are going on by us, too, so I'll try not to do a whole lot of repeating. But I do want to start out with a thank you, first to Margie, for coming to our Academic Senate meeting and sharing her commitment to her area. for coming to our Academic Senate meeting and sharing her commitment to her area and to be a voice, and that she brought to all of the trustees the idea of having additional meetings at Columbia College. So I want to thank all of you for voting for that and for adding the additional meeting to Columbia College. It means a lot to everybody at our college, and I'm excited that you'll get to see people that wouldn't typically be here at these meetings. I also, as I took this position as Academic Senate President, I didn't realize all the gifts that would come with the job. And so I also want to thank Chancellor Young and Chad Redwing for a beautiful dinner in Oakdale and the time to talk and to get to know each other and share ideas over that dinner. Most recently, a few of us went to the Fall Plenary. And this year it was at Newport Beach, so not a bad place to hang out for a few days. It was beautiful. And I was there with our president-elect Lana Von Eppes. And also joining were our MJC colleague Shelley Circle, who's a faculty member and vice president of Academic Senate. And I didn't realize they invited administrators, so I also had time to spend time with Jennifer Zellet, VPI at MJC. And it truly was delightful, again, to get to know and to join forces from both colleagues. So I think the connections and the relationships between the colleges are invaluable. And we have lots of tough decisions to make. And it seems like even though they stay tough, that they feel better when we get to know each other. There's mutual respect and we can trust in each other. So the Plenary started back in 1970, and so they're celebrating their 50th year this year. And it's the Plenary for the Academic Senate for California Community Colleges. And it was created for the promotion and advancement of public community college education in California. And it has some purposes, including to strengthen local academic synods and councils, to serve as the voice of faculty and the community colleges in matters of statewide concern, and to develop policies, promote implementation of policies on matters of statewide issues, and to make recommendations on statewide matters affecting the community colleges. So over this three-day time period, there's lots of different sessions that we can attend. And while it's impossible for any of us to attend all of them, we do have a chance to make selections. And so one of our district council meetings, Chancellor Young had started encouraging faculty to look at equivalency and minimum quals for faculty joining our institution, especially as we continue to develop our relationships with our local high schools, with the CCAP courses, College and Career Access Pathway. So there are teachers at the high school that have been teaching courses for the last 20-plus years but don't meet our minimum quals. And we've had what we call the two plus two, where we have actually matriculated, articulated a course, but not the teacher from the high school to the college. And so I was delighted to actually find a session at the Plenary that allowed for further exploration of the topic, including look at the processes for granting equivalencies. So we're going to move forward with that and looking at that further at Academic Senate. Lots of other sessions too, including Guided Pathways, AB 705, Credit for Prior Learning, so this was an equity-driven initiative. Let's see. And then one of the goals is to be inclusive of all the faculty. So this session that I really enjoyed was the Part-Time Faculty Engagement Strategies and Governance Processes. And so that's a huge conversation about how we include our part-time faculty in the governance and participating college-wide. Some of them are only on campus for short periods of time or not at all if they're teaching online courses. And where we have in our contract to participate as full-time faculty, I think that our part-time faculty are not extended the same ability to get paid in their contract for those moments. So I hope we can explore that area too. Overall, I'm really grateful to have had the opportunity to attend the Plenary as one of our leaders at Columbia College each fall and spring. So I just really feel thankful to everybody that makes that happen. The calendar discussion, we've heard from Alan and Chad. And we did have a discussion at our Academic Senate. And while we did agree that we'd like to see the calendar stay status quo, I do want you to know that faculty is very open to looking at data and reasons to explore a different calendar and to move forward with that. And so I think that's important to note. Like Chad, we met with Catherine Pritchard and Lucy Munoz today, which was another wonderful meeting. And it's very much tied into our faculty hiring prioritization, which is well on its way at Columbia College. So our faculty get together and we look at the five proposals that we had this year. And then we get together with our administrators and we rank those. And so our recommendation to our president at this point in time ranks the following positions, and this is in order of ranking, is math, chemistry, Spanish, art, and humanities/philosophies. And we have three retirement positions. And then finally, I had invited all of you at a prior board meeting to attend a community building event. And we did carry that out. So we went to the women's volleyball game, and then we went and had pizza after at our local pizza parlor. And our Classified Senate at Columbia College challenged us to a tally of most people attended in the different categories. So I was a little bit hesitant about having competitions somewhere where we are trying to build community, but we won. And so I changed my mind because the result of that was that the Classified Senate brought us the most delightful, beautiful snack to our last Academic Senate meeting, along with a trophy. And it was a trophy of the Academic Senate Classified, I'm sorry, the Classified President, her son's old soccer trophy, that she put a label over it. And so we're hoping to playfully move that between the two synods over the next year. And we hope you might consider coming to our Chili Cook-Off. And we're also exploring, looking at possible community participation in areas in our community that need help and support, just like the beautiful presentation tonight for the food presentation. Thank you. And are there any questions?
Thank you very much. It's kind of nice to hear the word wonderful and the word meeting in the same sentence.
Thank you, everyone.
Give me the trophy next time.
Yeah. Okay, do we have LTAC next? Do we have, is Jillian here? No? No? Okay. Okay. Scratch LTAC. Then we have Eric.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Trustees and chancellor and everybody else. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Eric Anno from Columbia College, the, one of the YFA presidents, vice presidents. And Shelley is not feeling good tonight. So I offered to step in for her tonight and it didn't take too much. It's nice to see everybody. I do hope the board doesn't regret their decision to add another meeting on the Columbia campus with our trend of power hourages. We do have a bunch of candles and things making our... To start off with a positive note, Shelley wanted to make sure, and these are in her words, to recognize these two wonderful and dedicated nursing faculty. Sandy Brun, who's retiring from the nursing program after 16 years, and then Laura Defridas, who's resigning. So she wanted to make sure we include them. On the contract negotiations update, this is sort of a personal note for me because I joined negotiations three years ago. And as you know, it wasn't the friendliest environment at that point. So I stepped into that sort of environment. And I got to tell you, it's so much different this year. It's just so refreshing to sit down and have that good faith bargaining and cooperation and respect. And I think there's a couple of credits to that. And one is the members, it's just a new, fresh group of members. And Dr. B, I think, is instrumental in bringing sort of that cooperation. Thank you for the appointment of the team there. We had our first session, of course, and reviewed our guiding principles and reopeners. Both teams are currently assembling resource documents to help guide negotiations. And those will be put on a shared folder that any member on both sides can access at any time. And just as a side note, it was agreed that the lead from each side would have access to put information into those folders. Our next meeting is set for Friday of next week. By the way, it seemed like the toughest negotiations item we've had so far was to schedule the meetings. You know, that's a lot of members to get on board with the same date. So we did look ahead and scheduled far into the spring because we knew that's the best time to grab these dates that aren't obligated yet. So we did that. As far as the academic calendar, YFA supports the calendar that's being presented for your approval tonight and also supports the MJC Academic Senate Inter Session Task Force. Just throw that out there. Board policy, concerning Board Policy 7250, which is dealing with the educational administrators, YFA thanks the board for pulling this policy. There's some concerns over the language that's in there. Not necessarily the policy, but the way it's written. In short, it allows the provision for administrator to be assigned to a faculty position without going through the rigorous selection process. And I think we'd all agree that competition is good for anybody. And so that's the YFA's concern on that. And last, again, a thank you to Shantanu, as Shelley puts it, for kicking this negotiation season off in a spiritual way. We're off to a good start. That's it. Any questions? Nice to see everybody. It's been quite a while, it seems.
Eric, I have a question. It's not about your report, but later on in the agenda, we have a sabbatical report from someone at Columbia. And can you tell us what Alicia Colstadt teaches?
Alicia's a counselor and she also teaches psychology.
Okay. I didn't know. I appreciate that. Thank you.
One of our long-term... One of you, by the way, I just got to mention, one of you I followed to YCCD from Turlock High School in 1997. But I won't give your name away, Abe. Okay. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Okay. So let's see. Tiffany is not here tonight, but she presented her report to us. So we have received it and it will go in the record. So, all right. So now we're up to President Hoopis.
Well, to begin with, in reference to just past Veterans Day, I want to express my sincere gratitude to our veterans for their service to our country and to our allies. I grew up in a family where they served at such places as Iwo Jima, Pearl Harbor, Korea. And I know of the sacrifices and dangers veterans have faced. And in my eyes, every one of them is a hero and deserving of our utmost respect. So thank you if you're a veteran. In terms of the report, our first one, acknowledge Susan Jaeger and Catherine Pritchard for wearing MJC colors. Go Pirates! I'm sure it has to do with the fact that we just... It'll still be blue. It'll still be blue. I think it has something to do with we won our seventh straight homecoming game, football game. And so that's, I know that's why they're celebrating MJC colors. Great turnout. I don't know if anybody came to the game, but the stands were full. So it was great to see such a great turnout for homecoming. In terms of things going on campus, in terms of instruction, Dean Gillian Daly and Professor Ruth Lumen and Classified Professional Mary Calderon presented at the California Adult Education Program about our model practices at work in our College English Learners Welcome Center. This is an innovative outreach for adult language learners and is particularly effective in our area and is a model for other colleges to follow. The departments and divisions have completed their program review and the administrative program reviews will be completed by end of November. Following institutional processes, the faculty are going through their hiring prioritization process, which will guide the college, not only in any potential new hires, but also in addressing strategic replacements. The prioritization is based on strategic objectives, laid out in the Instructional Outlook Report, which draws upon an educational master plan and our Vision for Success Goals. MJC is now migrating to Curriculumet as well as Columbia. And from Curriculumet, I can't stand that word.
I know.
That program, two E lumens, both for its curriculum management as well as the electronic catalog. Program maps are nearly completed and are beginning to make their way through departments, then through the participatory, boy, I'm having trouble with the English language, participatory governance processes. This is the final component needed to schedule according to the pathways. New faculty orientation is being conducted monthly, both through the Academic Senate and the Office of Instruction. And VP Zellet should take a bow. Thank you. That's all I wanted to say. Jennifer helped plan the Fall CCCC IO Conference. And I know that was a big doing, and so thank you, Jennifer. For Student Services, MJC Hispanic Education Conference had a record turnout. We hosted this 36th Annual Hispanic Education. On October 12th, we had 959 students and community members that attended the event, which had 75 employees and volunteers working the event. So I appreciate all the work that went into making that a success. Modesto High School Counselor Jorge Perez was awarded the Conference Legacy Award for his many contributions to the conference. Additionally, Modesto High earned the Champion Award for bringing the most students to the conference. As a Hispanic-serving institution, MJC hosts conferences with the purpose being to enrich and empower current and future MJC students to be successful in pursuing their higher education, preferably at MJC or Columbia. In terms of planning, innovation, and effectiveness, the college is immersed in the Stanislaus County Cradle to Career Initiative. Several administrators and faculty are participating on county-wide teams focusing on improving reading skills in children, building stronger collaboration in math acquisition, improving the pipeline from K-12 to MJC and then on to Stan State, and mapping local assets and training and support for career readiness. This is a 30-year plan to increase learning and job opportunities in our community in a meaningful and equitable way. And finally, the process for the fifth year of funding for strong workforce projects is underway. In the last four years, MJC's strong workforce funds has supported four capital projects, a development of six new programs, and enhancements of 10 existing programs. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Comments? Okay. Shantanu is not here. So we are going to move on to, you can read the two items that are listed in your agenda. And we're going to move on to our chancellor.
Thank you, Chair. I want to first comment about the hiring freeze that was previously announced. Folks have asked for clarification. I have sent out a clarification email. In addition, I was over the East Campus. I had people who asked me. So once again, I just want to reiterate, it's a hiring freeze of new positions. And those positions that were already in process or in the pipelines would not be affected. And there is an exception form to be filled out for those departments that feel that the circumstances are such that a position has to receive a waiver, an exception has to be made. So send it forward through your internal process at the campuses. And then your president's office will send over the... office will send over the documentation over to my office for me to review and then to share the information with the Board of Trustees. So with that system in place, I'm confident that we can make that initiative work. And so I look forward to working with the two colleges as we try to be more sensitive to our fiscal situation. I want to take a moment to mention that the memorial service for our former trustee, Don Vis, went very well at the Modesto Covenant Church on Floyd Avenue. In fact, I believe it was very well attended and the whole church was full, really. So that was a good service in which we saw many of the trustees, friends and associates, former students all showed up to celebrate his life. The presidents and I attended the California Economic Summit in Fresno last week. We heard from many speakers, including the governor. And of course, he mentioned a lot of great things that the state has been doing for us. And it was an opportunity for the presidents and I to network with other individuals and other agencies in the economic development and workforce development sectors. I want to thank Vice Chancellor Susan Jaeger for reaching out to the campuses in the budget forums and other avenues that she has been making herself available to answer questions and provide additional information and clarification pertaining to the budget situation. And so I'm going to call on her now to address the two other items on my list here. Budgets, polling update, and the poll update. So with that, let me turn over the time to Vice Chancellor Jaeger.
Good evening. I'm assuming you mean the presentations I've been doing. Actually, I would like to thank the colleges. So I've received several invitations and they've been, these presentations have been remarkably well-attended. I was at MJC last Friday and on, yeah, Friday at noon, and the room was full. And I was up at Columbia, I believe it was last month. And again, it was the noon hour, but there was, I think so, or afternoon, but the room was full. So people are very interested in hearing about what's going on with our budget. So I also went to a meeting of the college council with Dr. Hupus. I think I'm supposed to go back to the doc, to Dr. Hupus as college council, but I'll need a date because I'm hoping it's not this Monday because I'm spoken for to do a second budget presentation for CSEA at MJC on the, at the West Campus. So last week was the East Campus. I also did the RAM, a discussion about RAM at MJC's Academic Senate. And then I am scheduled, I believe, this Friday to be at MJC's rack to talk about the RAM. So I, I'm receiving invitations and I'm very grateful for the invitations and the attention that people are paying, and particularly to see people on a Friday at noon. And they were there and the room was full and they asked great questions. So that's going very well. There are a couple of other items I wanted to update you on. The survey regarding the bond. So the survey has been, it is completed and is actually, they are doing the surveying this week. And we should receive summary comments by the end of this month with more detailed information following the first and second week of December. And then I've asked the survey consultant to come to the board meeting in December to update the board on the findings of the survey. And then lastly, on the pool, we received approval from DSA at the beginning of this month. And we have some, we have to reach some final agreements with the insurance company on who's paying what, but we're pretty close there. And we will go to bid next month, December. The bid will be awarded mid-January and construction started in February. The completion date is late summer 2020. So that, of course, assumes we don't have El Nino this winter, which I really hope we won't, but we're keeping a pretty good schedule here. So that's the updates.
Thank you very much. So we are up to the grant activity update, which is in the agenda and is just presented for information. And now we're up to consent items. Are there, yeah. You're up, Abe.
Before I move to make a motion on that approval of the action items, I'd like to recognize Sandy Brunn, 16 years of service as a professor of nursing, and Judy Jenkins with an 11 and a half years of service in special programs at CalWorks. Congratulations to their retirement. And with that, if there is no addendums or corrections to the consent agenda, I'll move that we accept them as presented.
Are you on?
It helps, it helps turn it on, yes. It's on 6.10. It's the summer schedule. And the same rationale that we see is that the 4/10 summer schedule has provided efficiency and energy cost savings. And if it's not too much trouble, I don't, I'd love to see how much savings we get. I'd like to see the, the costs for energy, 410 versus whatever.
Yeah. I didn't calculate it this year, but I will get the number. But I know that last summer savings was approximately $365,000. So we are...
Like 10 weekends that it was off? $300,000.
Yeah. And so I will ask Judy to calculate that again, because we try to calculate that each summer.
Okay. Only, only if it's not too much trouble. Because that's a pretty significant amount.
Good question. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. Did I have a second?
Yes.
I did. Okay. Great. All right. All in favor of accepting the consent agenda?
Aye.
Opposed? Say nay. Okay. And any abstentions? No? All right. Motion carries for the consent agenda. And now, if I can skip ahead. All right. So we're up to, unless I'm skipping something, the academic calendar. The recommended action is that the Board of Trustees adopt the 2021 academic calendar for Columbia and Modesto Junior College as attached.
So moved.
Okay. Do you, Nancy and Abe, which one wants it?
Go for it, Abe.
Are there any abstentions? I had a motion for it. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So we did the board policy already.
7.6.
Yeah. So we are up to 7.6, which is the reopener of negotiations for CSEA. The recommended action is that the Board of Trustees receive, which we have, CSEA's bargaining proposal reopener as attached, that we schedule a public hearing in December, and that we refer the proposal to administrative staff for review. So do I have a motion? So moved. All right. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay or no. I don't care. Any abstentions? That motion carries. All right. We are back to Susan for 7.7.
You know, I think I'm going to go up there. It's easy.
That's fine.
Self-heard.
Can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That's much easier. Thank you. So we have before you the first quarter report for 2019-20 with the period ending September 30th. So one thing I want to say before I start is that this report will not include the transfers from fund balance that you approved at the last board meeting. That will actually happen in the next quarterly report. So you have this first page, which is the actual page from the 311. And so that's divided up into sections. And so the first section is about our revenues. And so there are four columns, and the first column is the adopted budget. The second is the current budget, which there's not been a change to thus far. And then the year-to-date actuals for revenue are approximately $17,621,000. And then, and then you have our projected actuals, which at this point really should equal the budget. Then the section B is the expenditures, and our total expenditures are, and again, I'm looking at the third column, $25,869,000. And so if you look at line C, that means we have a deficit of approximately $8,248,000. That is not unusual this time of year because I checked. So we usually are running a deficit. It may be a little on the high side, but it's not unusual or of concern. In the next section, starting in D, we have our fund balance. And so that's just our beginning fund balance at $17,859,000 approximately. And that hasn't changed yet. In the next quarterly report, that will change, reflecting the actions taken at the last board meeting. So section two, we're looking at our annualized attendance FTES. This is a projection, and it's based on last year. So it's, the projection is $16,315 FTES. Under three, we have our cash balance, which is approximately $21,885,000. And then question four asks us, have we entered into any contracts with any of the employee groups? And the answer is yes, which then down underneath the next section, you can see the salaries and benefits associated with the agreements we made with LTAC, CSEA, and the VPs. So it also includes, we do have the health benefit cap at $1,600, so I would remind you of that, that the board put in place last fiscal year. I did want to draw your attention to the second page of this report. We don't normally look at it too much. But question six asks, does the district have significant fiscal problems that must be addressed? And so given that we have a hiring freeze and given that right now we're being very careful with our funds, people might be expecting us to have checked yes here. But checking yes here is the equivalent of pulling the fire alarm. So at this point, we're just making sure we are checking the building. We don't believe there's smoke in the building, but there's a fire. It's across the street. The fire really could come across the street, at which point we'd pull the fire alarm, right? So that's what this box means. This box, you check it and a whole other activities happen. So it is currently checked no, and I hope that it will continue to be checked no for the remainder of this fiscal year. So next, we have the quarterly financial report for general fund. And this is the one where you can kind of get an idea of how we're doing this year compared to last year. And pretty much everything's very similar, so I'll just tell you that as an overview. So when we look through, the various columns are the 2019-20 final budget and then the first quarter. And then we compare the percentages for the first quarter of 1920 to the first quarter of 1819. And so what you see is that the state apportionment dollars are slightly lower at 16.31% compared to 17.23%, but it's, it's just not significant enough to worry about at this moment. State other is actually up a little bit, so I think that makes up for it. Non-resident tuition. So this looks like a big change. It looks like that we're down, you know, we're only collecting 64.04% compared to 85.88%. But last year, we had increased the rates, but we hadn't increased the budget. This year, we've increased the budget. And so it's a percentage of a much larger number. And so that really is not that substantiative of a change, if that makes sense. So we were collecting more money last year and we hadn't changed the budget amount to account for that. This year, we changed the budget amount to reflect the higher fees. Good? Moving on to interest, that's coming in a little bit lower. But actually, this again, the budget was increased for interest because of the actuals interest last year. And so our, we've collected more interest money to date as of, as of September 30th than we did at the same time last year. So in dollar values, we're about the same. Calstir's on behalf is always at the end of the fiscal year. And then other is, that's another one where the budget was almost doubled for this item. And so we're about the same in dollars as we were at this time last year. So moving on down to our total revenues of 15.68 compared to 16.88, we're pretty, we're pretty on task. So moving on to expenditures, there's really no need for concern. MJC is at 22% compared to almost 22% last year, so they're pretty good. Columbia College is right on track at 20.34 compared to 20.37. And Central Services is a little low, 27.97 compared to 28.80, but we also have several positions that aren't filled. And then transfers out contingencies, this number was much smaller than it was last year. And so the Health Fund and the PEP Funds have already been transferred out. So the majority of those funds have already gone out. So with that, we, that's the quarterly report. We're in pretty good shape in terms of what we know so far. And of course, what I have been saying in the presentations, these budget presentations, one is I, I've gotten word that there's concern that we are considering layoffs. And I've said that there's been no discussion of layoffs and that when there is that discussion, I'll be back out there again. So I want to reassure people of that. And then secondly, what I've said is that we are in a mindful state of mind. We, we need people to be mindful of expenditures. We're being mindful of our hiring. And that's what we should be doing in any event. But we're actually asking for people to put extra thought particularly into hiring. And then as we move forward into December, when we may receive additional funds for 18, excuse me, for, what year are we in? 1819. And then in February, we are looking for a, an increase for 1920. We did get encouraging news at the ACBO Conference that... We did get encouraging news at the ACBO Conference that they really did withhold approximately $143 million. And so that is good news. It's better than 43, which is what I had gotten the first time. But it's to be shared, as far as I can tell, among the quote, and forgive me, and successful districts. And that's good news. There's 37 of us. I think that's what I counted. But on the other hand, that does include San Diego, Los Angeles, and Los Rios. And so those are three of the four largest districts in the state. So how we stack up against them, I don't know. So that's what I know. Are there any questions?
I have a comment and a question. I, I first of all, also wanted to extend my gratitude to you for taking time to meet with people and groups and-
It's my pleasure.
And, and do it again. In other words, come back out. It's so important to be able to provide those forums and for people to digest it, and then, and then be able to ask more questions once they've talked about it some more, and you, you making yourself available. So thank you. I think that's just terrific. So my question is, I understand the allocation being tardy and arriving, and the 1920 coming in February, I understand all of that, and the successful districts for which we are one, and we're waiting for that. However, I, I, I take a little issue with looking at the deficit spending of over $8 million and saying that, that's, that's commensurate with where we were. Because as I've said before, deficit spending is the, is the marker in the sand for insolvency. So I just want to make sure for the record, when we look at deficit spending, it's never a good position to be in. But I know why we're there. So I just, you had said it's okay, but-
In this, in this situation, it's okay, because this has nothing to do with our budget, having a deficit budget. Remember, the 3 million's not in here.
Right.
Always at the start of the year, there's a lag of our revenues.
I guess I just want to make sure we understand, the word deficit is always a little bit of a problem.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah.
In, in our budget, on the annual budget, deficit spending is bad. So if this were the fourth quarter, I would be standing up here, I wouldn't have any hair left, because I would pull it all out, and I'd, you know, be letting you know, we're in big trouble here. So thank you for being able to clarify that, Margie. That was very helpful.
I wanted to thank you too for explaining why you didn't check the yes box for question, my tab is covering it, I think it was six, but I'm not sure. Because I, I had that question. So now I know that we haven't pulled the fire alarm, and I appreciate that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Thank you. So the recommended action is that I conduct a public hearing. And then we have to see if there are any questions, which I'm sure would already been asked, but we're going to do it because we have to. So the public hearing is open. Are there any further questions or comments? The public hearing is closed. And I need a motion to direct staff to submit a copy of the required report to the California Community Colleges Chancellor's office. All right, so Nancy, do I have a second?
Second.
From Ann. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right. So we are now up to 7.8. The first reading of the CCAT partnership agreement. It is presented as an informational item. It will come back to us later. And comments from the board, 8.1. Let's start.
The only comment I would have is that I really hope the academic senate will carefully look at qualifications, because if we give college credit to someone at a high school who's teaching a class, that, if it's good enough for the student to take it to the high school and get credit, maybe that person's qualified to teach a college class. You, you know what I'm saying, right? Okay, thanks.
Okay. So let's start with our student trustee. Do you have any comments?
No comments at this time. I will take it back to get more feedback on it.
Okay.
Oh, to the, oh, okay, sorry. I thought we were still, I was looking at the document. I'm very sorry.
That's okay.
I have no further report, other than I attended my meetings. I had a great Veterans Day. I worked my first 12-hour shift, and I met many veterans. Hostessing, letting them eat free meals. It was very nice. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. And thanks for coming to our policy and procedures meeting yesterday. All right, Nancy.
This last month, we went to the CLC, C, CLC? I think I've got it right now.
ACCT.
Oh, the, okay. The ACCT Conference in San Francisco. And I learned a hard lesson. If it says 4 o'clock, you don't go to move your car at 4:15. And it's a very expensive lesson. But the conference itself was awesome. I learned a lot. The people that were doing the trainings were very well-prepared and were experts in their field. And I felt like the knowledge that was gained was really good. And it was a great experience. I also did the policy and procedures meeting. And as Ann has reiterated month after month, we really are looking forward to getting the due process to a finish. And we thank you guys for all hanging in there with us.
All right. Margie.
I wanted to publicly thank the community members within the Yosemite Community College District who have given tremendous financial support to both of our foundations. I mean, it's really remarkable and important to take pause to publicly acknowledge the generosity, especially before December, when people are thinking about contributing more in their giving to the foundations. And it's, you've, you've seen the reports, it's very gratifying to see how generous people are in supporting our Community College District. And then to acknowledge both Amy Nilson and George Budruckas, I don't know if I say that correctly, in the hard work they do in garnering the respect and adoration of the community to want to give to the college. I mean, this is, these are gifted and talented people who make that relationship really important. I also wanted to highlight something in, in Shanta News Report, and that's on December 4th, the college hosts something called Dinner with a Scientist, which is in its, I don't know, 20th, I don't know, it's been going on for a long time. And it's an invitation to all 5th and 12th, 5th through 12th graders from every single elementary school and high school in the, in Topeka County. And it's a collaboration of the, from the professors at the college, experts in the field, and a speaker at, in, in Oak Pavilion, who entrants these young kids to want to pursue a, a, a career in STEM fields by these amazing professionals who talk about what they do. And then more importantly, these students get a chance to look at Columbia College and imagine themselves there as students. I also want to thank Pam for mentioning the equivalency issue and the efforts to examine how we might articulate a barrier that is there to help recruit really qualified teachers from perhaps high schools to work at our colleges who are highly qualified to do so. So thank you for acknowledging what you learned from that and how we might explore that. And finally, I wanted to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving and a safe Thanksgiving until we see you in December in Columbia College.
Thank you very much. Ann?
I had a light month. I had a meeting with Catherine Pritchard. I attended a MAPS program, and I had the policy and procedure meeting, and a lot of time spent working on due process.
You weren't expecting it that short, were you?
No. I'm missing somebody in there.
Yes, got to stay awake.
Okay, so I'm not going to go in order, but one of my goals for the, one of my first years that I, I haven't met yet was just to, to see and support our students and kind of find out everything we do in the college in Columbia. So this was the first month that I had my first play. So I went to watch The Hunchback of Little Nam. That was pretty cool. So I also had my first football game. Unfortunately, we lost that game against Fresno. So that was the two things. And I'm excited, but there's a lot of things that I want to still do. That's only two things. We also had a regular finance committee meeting. So I'm going to skip that one. We had also, together with chancellor, we had a meeting with the Series Unified Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent. And it was awesome. They were very receptive, and they had a great, a whole bunch of great ideas for our kids to transition into our college. It was awesome. I think that was Sid. Yeah.
Is it? Okay.
Maybe. I don't know.
All right, Abe.
Darren is not here.
Darren is not here. He could not be here today.
I probably attended some of the things that went on before. But other than attending the agenda debriefings and reviews and finance committee meetings, I was able to attend the SCOE dinner. Dr. Hoopis, I learned a lot about you. That was a good presentation, personal presentation, along with areas also. And then I attended the Hispanic Conference. Brian left already, but it was over 950 students. And even though Modesto won the prize, when I got there early, there was like three busloads coming from the west side. And I think there was 80 students, the driver told me in each bus. So Newman, Gustine, and Patterson. Also, I attended the Vis funeral service, and the chancellor made an outstanding eulogy for Don Smith. Some of the things that you don't know about, and I'm not trying to embarrass the chancellor, but some of the things you don't know about is that chancellor's wife would deliver meals to Don Vis, like once a week, I think it was, or an occasion, and had done that quite often since Don retired and his wife passed away. So I have to admire the chancellor for the professional, professional service that he provides at this district. And I also attended several athletic events and a board study session. And happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Thank you. Margie brought up the foundations, and it reminded me that the MJC Foundation is sponsoring the Disney Institute again, the Leadership Institute, on November 22nd. And Ann and I went to that last year, and it was wonderful. So I highly recommend attending that if you happen to be free. As for this month, I went to the board debrief meeting on October 20th. I went to the ACCT trustee conference in San Francisco. That was four days of information. The memorial for Don Vis at Modesto Covenant, which was moving and kind of overwhelming in some ways, that he had eight children and something like 35 grandchildren, and I can't remember 20-something great-grandkids. And one of the people who spoke said, that's not a family, that's a tribe. And they were all there, and it was, it was moving. And also the board agenda preview meeting and the policies and procedures committee meeting, we're hanging in there with due process. So thank you very much for being here. And I'm going to adjourn this meeting in a second, but our next meeting is December 11th. And in, assuming there are not high winds and power shutdowns again, or snow, we will be in Columbia. So thank you very much. Oh, and that will be at 3:30, the usual time theoretically, if, if we're able to do it. So thank you very much for being here. This meeting is adjourned.